Again, Metro Reimagined is called a comprehensive operational analysis. That is the type of planning effort that we're engaged in. And what that means is it's a really in-depth look at our entire system's operations focusing on our Missouri service area. It's something that transit agencies like ours typically do about every 10 years. Metro has not undergone a comprehensive system change for Missouri Metro Bus since 2006, when we opened the Blue Line, also called the Cross County Extension. At that time, many of you remember, many of the routes changed. And so as mobility patterns change, as new technology and mobility options enter the marketplace, or as budgets and needs change, we too have to change our network. Metro Reimagined is the vision for Metro Bus's operations for the next five to 10 years. And it is a plan that focuses on making adjustments and improvements to the system within the resources that we have available to us today. Our goals in Metro Reimagined are to drive ridership increase. We have lost ridership in recent years. We need to adjust our service so that it meets the needs of the region today and into the future. We want to provide the service that is the most cost-effective it can be in each of the many diverse markets we serve. And some of our approach to achieving more cost-effective service will be introducing new types of mobility solutions for markets. We want to deliver solutions, both service amenities and technology, that will improve the customer experience, make transit more accessible and attractive, and that ultimately helps grow ridership. The guiding principles of Metro Reimagined and other efforts that Metro has undertaken in recent years are intended to improve the customer experience. So we're focusing on creating a route system that provides more convenient transfers and direct service, but we're also considering and proposing amenities and tools that simply make the service more comfortable and easier to understand. We talked with the public in fall of 2017. Many of you may have attended a town hall meeting or a pop-up session at any one of our Metrolink stations or transit centers. And our goal at that time was to inform everyone that we are considering changes to the Metro Bus system and to ask, what is important to you? If you could make changes to Metro Bus today, what types of improvements or what types of service do you want to see? The number one thing that we heard from our customers is that they'd like more frequent service and shorter travel times. Another thing we heard is that we want more amenities, benches and shelters. We want to feel more comfortable and safe when using our system, and we want to spend less time waiting for the bus or the train at our connection points. We have taken that feedback along with industry best practices and a very in-depth look at our system performance, and that includes our ridership and our on-time performance, our customer comments, and a great deal of market research. And we've created a draft vision. This is our first attempt at redesigning the Metro Transit system to achieve those goals within the resources we have. Our purpose here today and throughout the course of this spring is to share this vision with you, the public, ask for your consideration and your feedback. We will use your feedback, and by the way, we're soliciting feedback through the first week in May. And at that point, we're going to begin revising this vision to move progressively toward a final Metro Reimagined plan. We anticipate beginning the implementation of a final plan in 2019. You will see a plan again before we move to implementation. Let's take a look at the network plan. Fundamentally, in Metro Reimagined, we are working to define the various mobility markets we serve across the region and to match those markets to the mobility solution or type of public mobility or transit that's most appropriate for those markets, again, within the resources we have available. The toolkit that we have available to us is Metrolink. We are assuming, in the context of Metro Reimagined, again, we're looking out at things we can accomplish within the next five years. That Metrolink service would remain as it does today, with the exception of the Boyle Metrolink Station between Grand and Central West End that opens this summer. We are proposing a suite of enhanced routes. And these enhanced frequent routes, it's a set of 12 routes, would operate at least every 15 minutes. This is a big change to the system. Today, only Metrolink and the 70 Grand operates at least every 15 minutes. This suite of routes, most of which would operate at least 15 minutes from 5:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., and a little less frequent in the early morning and late evening hours, would provide the backbone of our system, which would be complemented by a suite of local routes. Those local routes would also operate on what we call clock face frequency, every 30 minutes, every 60 minutes during midday or off-peak periods. So the connections between 15, 30, and 60-minute routes would be better timed and provide more predictable, reliable service and schedules frankly that are easy to understand and easier to remember. That's focusing on the user experience. We also have a suite of express routes. Some of those exist as they do today. We also have proposed all-day express routes between North County Transit Center, Downtown St. Louis, and North County Transit Center and North Hanley Station. And those are designed to speed up rather long trips in the region. That often happened between North and West St. Louis County or the city of St. Louis and North St. Louis County. And finally, we are proposing introducing some new types of service to the Metro Transit system. We are calling these new types of service, which will have some variation within them, community mobility solutions. Community mobility solutions would be a service that is more focused on individual or market-specific needs. It's not service that would operate on a fixed route, on fixed schedules. It could be a route that deviates from its normal routing to pick up or drop off passengers when hailed by a phone, a phone call smartphone, or a beacon at one of our key transit stations. These community mobility solutions may be more cost-effective and user-focused in some of the markets where transit, fixed route transit service just isn't very productive or competitive today. We've proposed solutions in suburban environments, employment locations, as well as dense urban neighborhoods like downtown St. Louis. Between those markets, those community mobility solutions would have some variation. We would test this service before it was eventually implemented. We hope to begin testing community mobility solutions later this year. Let's take a look at the proposed network. This information is on boards in the back of the room, so it's a little bit easier to see. It's also in the Metro Reimagined brochure that we have here today and on our project website at metrostlouis.org/reimagined. Again, Metrolink would remain unchanged. Our enhanced frequent network is that suite of 12 routes I mentioned. These routes exist today in some form. The routing would be modified for some of them, and the schedules would be modified to provide increased frequency. This collection of routes includes in the north, the 61 Chambers, 74 Florissant, number four Natural Bridge, 35 Rock Road, number four, 94 Page. North and South, it would include the 16 city limits, 90 Hampton, 95 Kings Highway, the 70 Grand, the number 10 Gravois, the number 11 Chippewa, and the number 73 Carron de Lett. We have worked to be deliberate in the spacing between these enhanced frequent routes to create a grid of frequent service and also to accommodate some of our longer-distance trips. For instance, between North County Transit Center and South St. Louis County, there would be all-day 15-minute service. Those routes would touch one another, that's the 74 and the 73, at Civic Center in downtown St. Louis. And that would speed up some of the longer-distance trips, which we have many of here in the St. Louis region. This is that network of supporting local service. Most of these routes would operate on 30-minute frequency. Some of them would be 30 minutes during peak periods and less during midday and evening hours. These routes serve communities, neighborhoods, institutions, and employers. These provide the reach of the system to complement that enhanced frequent network. And then finally, we've got the suite of commuter express routes that are really operating during specific time periods, with the exception of that all-day service from North County to downtown and from North County to North Hanley Metrolink Station. These purple areas shown on the map represent the zones that we've identified as for possible community mobility solutions. They would operate in different ways, but each would provide local circulation within a district, for instance, within downtown St. Louis or within the Fenton-Gravois Bluffs area, but would also connect customers from these more distant community mobility hubs to the main system at hubs like Shrewsbury Metrolink Station or Ballast Transit Center. This network is planned to be supported by what we call capital improvements or infrastructure. The infrastructure we're talking about in this bus-focused plan would include changes to the Metro Bus fleet. Today, our 400 Metro Buses are primarily 40-foot diesel buses. Soon, you'll begin seeing that fleet change. We buy about 16 or replace about 16 or 17 buses a year. As we begin replacing them in 2019, you will start to see electric buses enter our market. We're also looking at those local routes and considering replacing some of the 40-foot buses with smaller buses. We make that determination based on what we anticipate the maximum load or capacity needed on a given route is at its busiest point, keeping in mind that the same bus is operating during the peak period as it is midday and late evening. So we've got to be very deliberate about matching the bus to the market. We also have articulated or 60-foot buses that operate on Grand. We're scheduled to replace them between 2020 and 2021. We anticipate replacing them with electric buses. Each year, we'll begin to add more electric buses and those smaller buses to our market. Some of the service may be subcontracted by Metro, but not directly operated by us, particularly those community mobility solutions that might have episodic demand but not all-day everyday service. Our operators typically work an eight-hour day, and we have to construct the service in that way. Some of these community mobility options would give us greater flexibility in the design and the delivery of our service in those markets so that we can use the big buses and the all-day service on the corridors where it's needed most. We are also proposing a suite of community mobility hubs. These are not transit centers in the sense that we know them when we think about things like our downtown transit center, our Civic Center Transit Center, or North County. These are smaller hubs where a couple or a few routes would intersect, and there would be a higher level of passenger amenities in the public right-of-way or in the sidewalk area. These can also be launch points or pickup points for those community mobility hubs. The service would be branded and identified through signage and vehicle branding, so you know this is an enhanced frequent route and this is a local route. If you look at our system map today, you see an expansive system. But unless you're familiar with the system and its routes, you don't know how often they operate, what hours of service they have. So each of these proposed tiers of service would be communicated in such a way that the customer understands that. We are also in the process of rolling out a number of tools and technologies intended to make using our system easier, to make getting information easier and paying your fare easier. We have a mobile application for trip planning. We're providing real-time vehicle arrival information today via text messaging, email, and an interactive voice response system. Those are available 24 hours a day, even outside 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., when our customer service call center is open. Our customer service call center continues to provide customized trip planning assistance to our customers, as well as to solicit feedback, hear your comments, suggestions, complaints, and commendations. We are pursuing a messaging platform. In 2018, you will have a tool available to you so you can send us a text message or a Facebook message, ask a question, or get information. We are also beginning the soft launch of what we call Gateway Card. This is a contactless smart card. It's a stored, here's my Gateway Card. It's a stored-value card that you can use to load a pass, like a monthly or a weekly pass, or to load cash value, $5, $10, $20. Keep that card with you when you're ready to use transit, so you can avoid the hassle of having to use cash, because as you know, Metro Bus fare boxes don't make change. The Gateway Card became available just last month in a soft launch for full fare customers at our Metro Ride Store in downtown St. Louis at Eighth and Pine. Over the course of the next year, we're continuing to test the system, and we'll begin rolling this out to all of our customers. When we are ready for a full launch, you'll see us at pop-up meetings with our Gateway Card bus at stations and transit centers throughout our system. So stay tuned for more information there. So let's talk briefly about moving toward implementation and what this means. Again, this is a draft vision. We asked broad questions in the fall. What do you want and what do you expect? We took that feedback along with a host of other information and created a vision of what could be. We're going to make some changes to that, but we need your information to help us guide these changes. We need to know specifically how, where, and when does this, or does this not work for you? I know we'll be changing some routes, maybe adding some things back, adjusting the service and the frequency. We'll take all of this information we're collecting through the first week of May, and we'll spend a couple of months working on this. We'll come back to you this summer and share a revised vision. We are moving toward a 2019 implementation timeframe. Now, remember, some of the hallmarks of this plan is the frequent service. And in a cost-constrained plan, the frequent service that we're proposing here does come by changing the routes. In some markets, we're taking route segments off the frequent route, like, for example, the 61 Chambers, Glasgow Village is now served by the 61 Chambers. We want to increase service frequency to 15 minutes on a route that sorely needs it. So we're going to put local service in Glasgow Village and keep the 61 Chambers just on the main line on Chambers Road and deviating to Riverview Transit Center and North Hanley Transit Center. Even the 70 Grand would stop a little short of the Broadway and Taylor Transit Center. Broadway would be served by its own route. And that's intended to really focus that high-intensity service on the Grand, it's 10 minutes by the way, most of the day, where it's needed the most. So we want to know, does that work for you or does it not? The goal is to provide faster travel. For some customers, that might mean longer walk distances. We want to hear if that is politable. Does that work for you or does it not? Where do we need to fill in with routes? And if we need to put fixed route service, we'll have to decide, is it needed all day? How often does it need to run? And again, we are working and working to a great deal with the communities that we serve to deliver those customer-focused amenities. We're working with entities like the municipalities, the city of St. Louis, St. Louis County, and the Missouri Department of Transportation to create a network of a more complete pedestrian-oriented transportation system. Because all transit customers on some point in their journey are pedestrians, and we all need sidewalk, lighting, and street furniture. And Metro doesn't provide most of that, but we can provide some, and we can work with our partners to deliver a more effective and complete trip. Some of the peak frequency benefits, this is for that suite of 12 routes plus Metrolink, it's within a half-mile of 86% of our current riders, so that's good coverage. We were working to try and drive that enhanced frequent network coverage number up to make that service more accessible to more people. And that includes 38% of the residents of our service area, again, here in Missouri, and 46% of employment centers. So the increase for infrequent service relative to what it is today is quite a bit more. So today, 48,600 of our current riders are riding frequent service. That would jump to 74,500. You can see the same figures here for population and employment. As we move toward implementation, again, we started this about a year ago. So before we came to the public in the fall, we were engaging our stakeholders in leadership, and we were conducting that in-depth analysis of our operations. We're going to continue this effort through the summer. And once we have a final plan, we'll work behind the scenes on implementation, things like changing our vehicle fleet, demonstrating those community mobility solutions. We'll be updating all of our system-wide signage, including every Metro Bus sign, ideally coincident with this change, which would happen sometime in 2019. This concludes the presentation portion, and I want to stop now and turn the floor back over to you, the customers, for your feedback, and I'll invite Ms. Williams up to orchestrate that. We want to hear your feedback, but we are also available here in the room. We've got our entire planning team here to answer your specific questions and talk with you about how this proposal could impact you so we can obtain your feedback. Thank you.
We'll continue with our fourth speaker, Sarah Duratt. And as she's coming, please be mindful that you have three minutes, and we understand if you have to leave, but be sure you leave your comment on the comment form provided. Again, Sarah Duratt.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my comment. My name's Sarah Duratt. I run Combat Sexual Harassment, and my question is in regard to the comment I saw on the marketing that we'll be able to directly text public safety officers. I would love to know more information about that, and kudos in doing it.
Just quick response, so we have... We have just completed what we call our procurement process for our messaging tool, so we are now moving through procurement and purchasing. We anticipate that text messaging will be available in 2018. We'll likely have different lines, might be different numbers, those are the details we're working out, so that we can know if you need to contact us in customer service for a general question, or if your text needs to go to public safety in our Public Safety Control Center. We have also released an app I didn't mention called SafeTrack, and that is a tool available now. You can look on our website for that, and that's a tool you can use anywhere, whether you're here in St. Louis or traveling, and it is a press-to-hold if you're feeling unsafe, you're walking home at night. Open up that app, put your thumb on the dot, and all you have to do is take your thumb off, and SafeTrack will text you. And if you don't text back and say, "False alarm, I just accidentally tapped it," they're going to summon law enforcement. So SafeTrack and that mobile tool, more information and more ways you can contact us regarding public safety.
And SafeTrack is free, complimentary for one year, so that's a beautiful feature as well. Our next speaker is Heather Cameron.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you briefly this morning. Me and my colleague Ted Floros are here from the Brown School, and we've been conducting some work around how transportation affects infant mortality in some of the areas of our city. And we would like to share a few of our insights and to see how we can continue to work with providing data to make sure that all of the women here who are pregnant in St. Louis and want to get to the hospital of their choice can do that in a safe way, and how using public transport can be an option for them. So Ted, do you want to give a few points?
And just as a quick note, we are both also city residents and transit users, but we were really happy to see with the plan that 7490 and a lot of the lines covering North and South St. Louis, which oftentimes have like worse health outcomes, are going to have more access to bus transit, as well as like easier connections between North-South and East-West lines as a potential route for folks to get both to discretionary trips as well as non-discretionary trips like appointments and work and other things.
I think one of the things that we were able to speak about briefly before the formal session was just the need to provide infrastructure to support the needs of pregnant women and also women who are traveling with young children. So some of the spaces and some of the most-used bus stops in the area codes they were looking at, 63106 and 63107, basically don't have sidewalks, which would allow for strollers, don't have benches, don't have rain support. And so we would like, as Metrolink goes forward with this great new plan, to be really thinking about how we can protect some of those women, because when we're protecting them, then we're also making it easier for elderly people to use the bus stops, we're making it easier for people to get to the jobs they want. So thank you very much, and we look forward to helping in any way we can with this project.
Okay, I think it's very interesting that a lot of the people who seem to be operating this seem to be young millennials. And some of us have a knot of knowledge about the way things were. The technology tosses it in the garbage. We don't need that. If the buses really ran the way they should run, you wouldn't have to worry about text messaging or whatever. That's needed, because the things are not running as they should. The other thing was that you've eliminated a lot of stops. I guess you think that people go out of their door, and when they get to the street, there's the bus. Some people have to walk four, five, six blocks or more to get to a bus. When you eliminated those bus stops, you made it very difficult for a lot of people. And again, I think maybe because all of you are young and healthy, you don't know that. But there are a lot of other people, and what you should do with this plan is make an appeal to a lot of the boomers who are now in cars, that in a few years, you boomers are going to end up out of those cars, and you don't seem to know how to advertise that. Safety, well, to continue on that part, the lines that you were talking about enhancing are good, but your buses don't run 24 hours. I don't understand why it has to stop enhanced at 9:00. It can't run till 11:00 or to the end of that bus line? You know, the time of the bus, most of those buses stop before 11:00. You could continue that. Also, the other thing that bothers me is that your customer service thinks they're doing everybody a great service by continuing till 7:00. But what about people who are on the streets 8:00, 9:00, and 10:00? They need the service more than anybody. In some cities, after dark, if they run a, San Francisco, for example, they run an Owl Bus, after a certain time of night, you can actually flag buses down, because that also helps with the safety issue. The other thing they do for safety is that all policemen, ALL, all, sometime during their shift must board a bus, walk through the bus, see if everything is okay, and get off. You know, ask the driver, is everything okay, and get off. Every bus driver, every police has to do that during their shift. Also, their equivalent of Metro, which is the BART, they give free rides to transit officers, to police, if they can show proper ID, they get free bus line. You know, so you have, sorry, free metro ride. So you have a lot more safety also. The other thing they were talking about, the transit system, oh, well, these schedules. Well, you change your schedules every two months. How in the world is anybody ever going to remember your schedules? You have to, you know, it's funny, I lived in St. Louis for a long time, I was born here, I'll be out there. And I was left here for 50 years. When I came back, I discovered that there was a great change in the transit here. And one of the problems is that you change the schedule, so nobody knows the schedules anymore. Before, when I lived here, no one had to look at a schedule. We know that. We went out to the bus stop, within a certain amount of time, the bus would show up. Also, if they did have a schedule, we knew what it was, because it's the same today, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. Not anymore. You know, you're lucky if the schedule is in existence for 20 days. Anyway, a lot more I'd like to say, but thank you very much.
I found out something that was a little bit disturbing. I'm a rider of the 73. I'm a disabled fixed route rider. And the new route, the proposed route, rather, avoids Cherokee Street altogether. There are a lot of disabled people, children that go to school, and like a lot of route, a lot of stores and things along that route that those of us who access it use. Like, I will no longer be able to get to Schnucks, Aldi, or my job, which is in Carron de Lett, because I can't access the 73 anymore. Also, to jump off what the other person said, a lot of the proposed routes are avoiding senior citizen homes, places where people in poverty ride the bus. Like, I rode the bus for 26 years, I'm almost 31. So like, I've been riding it since I was in kindergarten. And the buses were convenient, you can get from point A to point B throughout what we call the hood, whenever you want it. But slowly and surely, those buses are disappearing. And with this proposed thing, it seems like the people that are giving you the proposals either live in St. Louis County and want to avoid the city altogether, or don't understand that there are elderly and disabled and children and people that shop that need access to those bus routes that you're cutting off. Also, I hope that you do add disabled monthly bus passes to the Gateway thing very soon, because honestly, going to Schnucks and the check-cashing place to get my passes every month is very inconvenient as a disabled person. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for being here today. I want to say, obviously, I think that 86% in that core frequency is a really pretty exciting prospect, and that's the direction, of course, we want to be taking stuff, is a higher frequency. So I commend that. I know that the real issue, of course, always is money, and the snakes in our state legislature not putting any money towards transit is a huge part of the problem. So I am a little disappointed with the amount of meetings and public input and how it has basically been impossible to find out about this stuff until last month. There's not a single public hearing on a weekend, there hasn't been any after-work. I know a lot of people are losing bus service and have comments about this. a lot of people are losing bus service and have comments about this, and I'm glad to see how many people are showing up today. But I really would encourage that for a change as big as this, having a meeting on a weekend where people could come and express their input would be really important. I think one of the most vital parts of this plan that I'm excited to see is fixing North-South transportation frequency. We see the seventy grand has been a super-successful line. I would love to see that on all of our North-South routes. And I think that's one of the biggest ways that we move people into using more transportation. Like Mr. Farmer here said, you don't need the technology if the bus just comes a lot. And it's hard enough to get North and South in a car in this city. If you could ride the bus North and South faster than a car, imagine how many people would be using it. And I think that that's a vital part of this. I'd like to see, I think, changes like bus lanes and prioritized signaling could be a huge part of making that happen, North-South faster. The eleven bus already uses a parking lane that nobody uses as a bus lane on half its route. And I love it because I fly down Jefferson. Just a couple other things. It's sad to see Saturday and Sunday service missing on some of those, the green, the thirty-minute and sixty-minute routes. A couple South County spots don't have any service on Saturday or Sunday, which I don't know how those folks are supposed to be able to get around. And it's been mentioned a couple times, but we have several seniors' homes losing service to them. So Jackson Park, which had the nineteen, the one in Sulard that had the seventy-three until it was changed, and then the twenty now serves it, but it won't be anywhere near a bus route. The one on Osceola in South City, these are all, these folks, you know, chose to live in this spot because they had transportation and they could get where they're going, and they're not going to have that anymore. Call-a-ride is an option for them, but it has its own problems. And if they're three minutes late, then the bus leaves them. And then finally, I also live on the seventy-three, and I live close enough to another line that I'm fortunately not going to be too badly affected by this. But that does, that's how I get to Aldi. That's how I get to Schnucks. That's how a lot of people in South City, you know, get up to It Goes By Save a Lot as well. Cutting these is pretty unfortunate, but I understand, like, we have to make decisions. I know that's one that I've heard a lot of comment about. And I think that's basically it. Oh, and the last thing is the fare card. I would love to see, a lot of cities have started implementing a basically cap on how much it costs to ride in a month. So if you ride the price of a monthly pass, that you don't get charged more for each ride. I think we have to be looking at transportation in a economic and racial equity standpoint, and that's one of the biggest aspects of that, is I can afford a monthly pass once a month. Some people have to pay each ride, and it's not fair to charge them more in a month just because they had to pay one time, one time, one time, and it ends up costing more than a monthly pass. So thank you very much again. Hope that there will be more feedback for whatever the next segment is, especially in the weekend. Thank you.
Marie, is it Cessels?
Did you say Marie Cesselski?
Cesselski? Yes, that's what I said.
Good afternoon. My name is Marie Cesselski. I'm the Seventh Ward Democratic Committee woman, and I'm deaf. So if I'm repeating anything that someone else has already said, sorry. I'm going to be writing, I'm starting a really long email regarding very specific safety concerns regarding the new map. So I don't want to get into any of that here. What I would like to talk about is the outreach regarding these meetings and this process. And the second thing is about revisiting past bus service as opposed to reimagining new service. Regarding outreach, the Seventh Ward is downtown Lafayette Square, LaSalle Park, Sulard, one block of Benton Park, most of McKinley Heights, little piece of Fox Park, some of Compton Heights, and two blocks in Tower Grove East. We have immense wealth and immense poverty. Oh, Peabody is also in the Seventh Ward. We have immense wealth and immense poverty, all compacted. We have mansions, and we provide tons of services to the unhoused community. And so when we, when I think of bus service, I think of the people that I ride the bus with. And none of them know about this process at all. And when I talked to people from by state regarding this, and the brochure was mentioned, and the meetings in the fall, and none of, excuse me, none of the people I know were involved in that process. And one of the problems with the brochure is, the brochure does not, that was on the buses and handed out at the transit stations, the brochure does not say, "Bus cut meeting." It doesn't do anything to alarm you that you might want to be involved with this process. Because you open it up, and it's about apps and frequency. And sure, frequency. Who doesn't want more frequent buses? Everybody likes pie. If I say, "Would you like pie?" You'll say, "Yes." If I say, "Will you swap your kidney for a pie?" You probably won't do it. Well, the same thing is for frequency. If you discuss with people, what would you give up to have fifteen-minute buses on this major line that's four blocks away from you or six blocks away from you? That's a whole different conversation than talking, than getting excited about frequency. So the outreach, to me, there needs to be a lot better outreach. It needs to be the sort of community outreach that those of us that organize neighborhood meetings do, which is lit drops or signs on the pole or whatever it is to get people there. Because you're not getting input from the people who wash dishes and go home on buses at ten and eleven o'clock at night. And there's lots of people like that. Now, the other thing I want to talk about is basically revisiting the past, because some of the, some of the information has been that Metro buses, bus ridership has dropped. So we need to find new ways to get more riders. And I would suggest that you need to look back at the decisions made in the past that reduced ridership. You can't undo Metro. You can't get rid of the trains. One of the reasons ridership started to drop is because you took buses and you force-fed the trains with the buses. Instead of riding a bus to work, people then had to take a bus and the train. You lost riders from that. We can't undo that. It's a done deal. But other decisions made over the past, actually, more recent years have been more devastating. When you, you took away bus service from City Hall and the Courts Building. When I came to work at City Hall twenty-plus years ago, forty-two-ish employees in our office, twenty-seven people use the bus. There are three people that sorely use the bus now in my office, one full-time, and that's it. Other people at City Hall used to use the bus. You used to take the bus to jury duty. Now you park and you use the shuttle that the city provides. Oh, I'm sorry. So there were decisions made that I think if you, if you went back to through buses instead of cutting up the North-South buses, if you, you used to have a bus that actually took people to Busch Stadium. Now they have to take a bus and the train to Busch Stadium. You need to look back at past decisions and undo some of those, and you would have riders return because service will be convenient. And people will go for the convenience factor way more than an app or conveniences at this transit station. That's all.
I want him to go that way.
Pat O'Shea.
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm Pat O'Shea. I work for St. Louis Public Schools. I ride the bus five to seven times a week. I live in South County. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity and for all the hearings. I do feel like we're being listened to. I've been, I ride the forty-six, I ride the train, I ride the seventeen, I ride the forty, I ride the twenty-one. So my whole effort is down south and downtown. We've been talking on the bus about this a lot. And just a couple things I'd like to add. First of all, the reason that ridership is off is because of safety, at least from my end. I know people that will ride the bus that will not ride the train, will not let their children ride the train. And so I know that you're trying to get ideas from other cities and about how to do the community there. But I would also ask you to get ideas for safety. I've had some frightening times on the train, and the times that I don't feel afraid is when someone with a badge gets on that bus and everybody who doesn't have a pass gets right off the bus. That is not, that is the thing that I think would help safety immensely, if every time someone gets on that train, they know that they've got a ticket or a pass. And that's simply not happening, okay? And, you know, I don't, I know that turnstiles are expensive, but I see people who are Metro employees that are not checking them as we go up on the station steps. And sometimes there's nobody there at all. And if you just check that, I think that that would be very effective, and those people are already there. The other thing is education. I would agree that a lot of people who are riding the bus do not know about all of this process, which so much time and effort has been put into. When I was on the bus telling people about this, a lot of them did not know anything about this. And my suggestion for a solution would to be when we're on the train and they're telling us all the upcoming things, all these things that you, can you say that on the PA system over the train systems? Did you know that you can get a value card? Did you know that this is going on? Did you know that you can take the shuttle to the Mardi Gras? You know, did you know that we're going to be changing this route come to this meeting? I think that that would be a great opportunity to say it on the train because they have, they're talking to us anyway about all kinds of stuff. Add that to the list. The other thing is the bus drivers. Some bus drivers, well, they told me that they were there at some hearings, and they informed me about some of the changes, which got me activated. And some bus drivers knew nothing or didn't want to talk about it. I think, again, with the idea of trying to keep things cost-effective, if you could ask the bus drivers to tell us what's going on, because the bus drivers know us, they see us, and they know what's going on with us. And I just think that that would be a way to do that. It would be cost-effective. Or find people like me who are motivated, and I'll go on the bus, you hand me stuff, and I'll let everyone on my, everyone on my line knows what's going on. And then, so I would appreciate that. As far as specific routes, the forty-six, which goes from General America up to the train station, I knew was originally slated to turn right on Gravoy and then go up to the, the place up there, Germania, what is it? The Germania place at Hampton. And that is a huge, huge problem, because you have people from General America, from St. Anthony's, from that commercial zone at Washington, I mean, at Watson and Gravoy, and, I mean, Le Cleed and Gravoy, and then Lutheran Senior Services. Those people take that forty-six so they can get to the train station, not to some bus depot in South St. Louis. So I understand that we've been listened to, that at least they're reconsidering doing that, and we're very, very grateful. Please don't let the forty-six not go to the train station, because that's just incredibly important. And we also want to say that we appreciate that the forty-X is still running down to South County. Some people wish that it would still go down to Bromgardner, but going down to South County is a huge help for us. The seventy-three, I understand that some of the people are upset about that reroute, but for us, we appreciate the seventy-three is still running down to South County. We, the South County is a major hub, so whatever you can get down at South County is huge because we, a lot of us meet there. People pick us up from there. The only other suggestion I would have is that the southwest corridor of South County, you know, that corridor that goes down Gravoy, is a bit underserved. Keeping the forty-six will keep that southwest corridor served. But also, if the Gravoy bus could run just a little bit further down, like past the library and to some of the commercial down there, I think that would help, because you're taking out the one-ten, the two-ten's coming out. So if that Gravoy could run down, that would be a main-line run that could still hook up with some other places. So thank you.
I'm retired now, but I rode, I rode the bus almost thirty-five of the forty-two years that I have worked down here. And one of the concerns that I have is that if you take certain buses off, there are seniors on, like you said, there are seniors on that route. They may not take it every day, but they need it. And I'm one of the seniors, but I have, I was very fortunate, I'm very fortunate that I'm able to walk yet. But there's a lot of them that can't walk four blocks to a bus. But anyway, I always take, they said, well, if you take the, oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. If you take the Sudard off and send it to the Manchester station, that's going to work. But for those people that are between the Shrewsbury Station and Arsenal, they're going to have a problem. That's all.
Okay. Those are the signatures who wanted to do public comment. Jessica, she has been taking good notes, and so she might want to, yes, yes. We have our court reporter, and that's fine if you filled out the form. That's fine. Did I leave you? Okay. Do it at the mic, please.
Sorry, please, please.
Restate your name for us, please.
My name is Brandy, and, oh, my name is Brandy, and I would like to make one more comment or suggestion. Along with me being disabled and things, I would like to say you, if you cut that route, that seventy-nine bus, the one that come visa through Bernuda Road, I would have to either go to the MetroLink or walk, and the MetroLink is like an hour away walking, or forty minutes to the bus stop, because the bus stop is not exactly, the seventy-nine is not exactly around the corner. It's like a forty-minute walk. And I have, like, arthritis issues sometimes, so it's hard for me to really get on the bus sometimes. So sometime I have to catch call-a-ride. But the times when I would like to catch the bus, I would like to be able to catch the bus. So if you can make some arranging, where like, if the bus don't have to run that often, can it be like in the morning and some service like in the evening? Will I at least have some, and the people around me that stay around her have at least some kind of option, where they wouldn't have to walk an hour to the MetroLink or forty minutes around the corner? Thank you.